Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the August 25 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. Start by asking Secretary Moore to please call a roll.
Mr. DeChau.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Casali.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Luray.
Here.
Absent tonight is Chairman Moffett. Acting Chairman Turner will be filling in.
And I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd also like to introduce our Planning Director, Julie Misich. Our Planning Department Manager, Nick Fiori, I guess, is on his way. Is he on his way? Not going to be here? Okay. Shame on him. And our Township Attorney, Bob Kirk. Tonight, we have two things on our -- well, first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the August 11 Planning Commission meeting.
So move. Support.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. As I was saying, tonight, we have two items on our agenda. They're both Class A non-conforming use applications. The first one is for site plan Class A non-conforming use number 25-14. Deborah Catanacci, LFT Investments LLC, 51500 Nappy Drive, parcel number 230714376018, located north of 23 Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway. La Famina Trucking, a concrete crushing. This is an application for a Class A non-conforming use. And, Mr. Kirk, could you please explain the applicability of this Class A non-conforming use as it relates to the site?
A Class A non-conforming use is a request for a Class A designation of a non-conforming use. Non-conforming use was a use that was valid before the ordinance enacted maybe some years ago. It's continued. At this point, they were -- normally, you can't expand or enlarge or rebuild a non-conforming use. But by giving the Class A designation, you're able to do so. However, it can come with conditions that the Commission might want to impose on the site.
Okay. Thank you. We didn't get any correspondence on this, Raquel, did we?
No, we did not.
Okay. I'm going to -- this is a public hearing. The format will be as follows. The petitioner, who's here, will give his presentation stating the reasons for the Class A non-conforming request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public for any comments. And then the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. Mr. Snyder, you're here, so go ahead with -- let us know what you're up to on the site.
Yeah, thank you. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township. Representing the applicant, La Famina Trucking, Deborah Catanacci is here in the audience with me, as is Fred Stark, who's the site manager-operator as well. So if there are specific operational questions about what's going on, they are here. But the guts of the presentation will, of course, be me. The site is located on the east side of Nappy Drive, north of 23 Mile Road. It's basically right across from the Macomb Department of Roads depot there, just south of the Cadillac Asphalt Plant. It's 8.3 acres, and it's zoned LM, and all surrounding properties are also zoned LM. So just a short, brief history of the site. The whole parcel is -- this is actually a piece of what was a larger 18.4 acre parcel that Giancarlo Asphalt originally owned. Back in 1985, he developed what's known as Nappy Drive now. Guess who did the plans? Urban Land Consultants and Mr. Wright. So we have some history at the site. And really, the whole 18 acres has been used for road building sorts of activities. The asphalt plant that Giancarlo originally was site plan approved in, I guess, 1985, which is now Cadillac Asphalt. There've been crushing operations there. There've been storage of materials there. There've been batch plants there. It's basically been a location where that road building industry has used as a home base for quite some time. So in 2015, the applicant acquired this part of the site, the 8.3 acres that's in front of you tonight. And they processed a site plan approval for what was essentially an LM use, a building for maintenance and upkeep of trucks and outside storage of trucks as part of La Famina Trucking. That's their sort of home base for the business. And since 2019, they have also been doing concrete crushing at the site. This has been done under a series of temporary permits. Like, each year, they come in, they ask for a temporary permit, concrete crushing. Of course, Cadillac Asphalt, just to the north, is doing concrete crushing as well. And then it's been permitted. So at some point, rather than to keep coming each year for, you know, a temporary use, you kind of have to look at the use and say, hey, is this something that's going to be here at the property a while? Concrete crushing isn't something that you do year-round. It's seasonal. And it's based on how much stuff, how much concrete needs to be crushed. So you would get a temporary permit, crush what you needed to crush. It would be moved out of the site as aggregate and used in the road building activities, and then start fresh the next year. So really, tonight, what the applicant is seeking is sort of a -- just to change the status of what he's doing. Instead of seeking a series of temporary permits, say, hey, this is going to occur at this site seasonally as the concrete accrues there, and just add it to the site plan. We originally contemplated bringing it in as a special land use, but the Cadillac Asphalt crushing to the north was permitted as a Class A non-conforming. So the planning director said, hey, take a look at that as a potential way of permitting this instead of a full special land use. And I didn't have any objections. And the Township Attorney, I think, was in accord with that approach as well. So that's why it's coming to you in this fashion, rather than maybe a special land use or something like that. So with that, the site plans here, it's really just a depiction of what happens when he crushes each year. All the stuff comes in more at the northerly end. There's a single access at a gate. They deposit the, you know, the uncrushed concrete pieces, large pieces, on the site on the northerly end. And then there's a crusher. It's actually mobile. It's untreads and moves, you know, south to north, and it crushes and leaves, you know, the crushed aggregate behind it. And then that is also trucked out the north. Nothing -- there was a driveway right across the street from the Department of Roads site, but that driveway is no longer used. It's closed and gated and locked. And there's no intention to bring it out there. Everything's going to go through the main entry there to the north. So, you know, with that, I have, you know, I'm certainly available for any questions you may have. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, we'll take it to the public. This will be the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this Class A non-conforming use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board valuation. Julie, do you -- at this point, we've got here the Planner comments. That comes after, or does that come before?
We can do that after.
We'll do that after. Okay. Typically. So now, if anybody in the audience wishes to come forth and speak for or against, you're free to do so now. So come on down. Once? Twice? Nope? Nobody? Okay. Bring it back up. Now, we'll go over to Julie. Go ahead. You're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for explaining the business operation of this site. I just wanted to make a couple of notes. That this site is well over 1,400 feet from any residential property. In the east side of this site, as you can see, everything is contained to the center of the site, or maybe closer to the road. But on the east side of the site, it's pretty heavily bermed, and there's landscaping, existing landscaping there. Over the years, I've been personally the one to approve some of the temporary uses and also carry this project to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've never had any complaints with our Code Enforcement Department as long as this, you know, we've granted this use. There's probably been two complaints. One of them was dealing to the Cadillac Asphalt site, and the other site was grass and weed complaint that was addressed immediately when it was brought to the applicant's attention. So other than that, I don't have anything more to add to this, you know, anything more than Mr. Snyder's already covered.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Snyder? All right. Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
Support. Moved by Secretary Moore. Luray? Okay. All in favor, do this -- all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The Planning Commission's recommendation must be based on the following. Continuance thereof would not be contrary to the public health, safety, and welfare or the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The use does not and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception. No useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions requirements of this ordinance with which the use does not conform. Commission may approve or disapprove this request. We can also table it if we wish this evening. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moore.
I move to grant Class A non-conforming designation for site plan number 25-14 for Deborah Catanacci, LFT Investment LLC, 51500 Nappy Drive, parcel number 23-07-14-376-018, located north of 23 Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway, based on the findings that it meets the condition set forth in Section 7.15B for a seasonal concrete crushing plant subject to the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all Planning, Commission, Department, and Engineering comments. The approval is based upon the following. Number one, the operation shall conform to all township, county, state, and federal regulations pertaining to this activity. Number two, the absence of a single-family development in the vicinity of the site minimizes the potential for any nuisances. Number three, the site has convenient access to 23 Mile Road. Number four, the seasonal operation of the concrete crushing operation shall be from March 1st to December 23 annually. The hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Number five, the use will not likely result in any nuisances for surrounding development. Number six, the site was originally part of a larger parcel that contained the same activities. Number seven, Cadillac Asphalt is located north of this site that conducts the same operation.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thanks, Pete. Second item is also a non-conforming use application public hearing. This is for use number 25, number 6-16, Ken Zapinski, Zebra Holding LLC. It's a vacant parcel located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Mound Road. A proposed vehicle and heavy equipment storage yard. Mr. Kirk, I'll ask you again, I will, to give us the -- is this Class A non-conforming use, how it relates to the site?
The current use is a valid non-conforming use, which means it was proper at the time of zoning change or zoning ordinance enactment. In this case, they're asking to continue that to allow it to maybe be enlarged, allowed to be continued, to be rebuilt. But with that, this township can be added on certain conditions. So they're asking for a Class A non-conforming, so they're allowed to continue the use in the future.
Okay. Very good. Did we get any correspondence on this, Raquel?
We did, Mr. Chair, from Ms. Rosbury. She is opposing this special land use request. It directly affects her living, and it's located directly behind her berm and her backyard area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. As before, this is a public hearing. Hold on one second. All right. It's a public meeting, not a hearing. I'll back up. But anyway, Pete, you want to go ahead and explain what you are proposing for this site as well?
Yes. The site plan will come up here in a second here on the screen, but this particular site is 113 acres total. It's zoned HM, and it's generally located on the east side of Mound Road, north of 22, south of 23, actually. It's bordered on the north by the Amazon Warehouse. It's bordered on, across Mound Road, Shelby Road, by some C2 property, R1C property in HM. On the south, it's bordered by 22 Mile Road and some other HM property, which is also vacant. And then on the east side, it's bordered by the Meadows of Central Park, which is R1C, and Manors of Central Park, which is R12. I think the historical setting, as we all know, Section 21, almost the entire section, was the Ford property, the factory and the proving ground. So Ford, when it wound down operations at the site, they sold off the land in pieces. I think in roughly 2002, Central Park was developed, has, you know, sold to developers and developed the Central Park, the north and the south. And then in 2012, 2013, the property, which is this property, and the Amazon parcel, was actually sold to Indiana Metals. The factory was still there. Some of you will remember fondly, well, not fondly, Indiana Metals and their debacle there at the site as they tore it down and left a mess. The applicant acquired the site in 2017, finished cleanup after Indiana Metals had taken all the metals, and he cleaned it up. And in 2017, 2018, the northerly portion was split and sold to Amazon, and of course, Amazon developed. The applicant, Z Holdings, has been using the remainder. There've been temporary use for storage of cars that were still in the supply pipeline to dealers. So there was some temporary use. There was actually a site plan approved for the entire area where the Amazon plant is now for outside storage of RVs and vehicles. There's a site plan that was approved for that. That, of course, was dissolved when the Amazon went through. And, you know, there's been heavy contracting, storage there going on. And of course, going back to, oh, at least the 1960s, this was a factory. In fact, that use was much more intense than this. There was even a railroad running back through there where there's supply chain. So these things like, you know, storage of brand-new cars as they were making it in the supply chain, and a lot of trucks, a lot of trailers, railroads, you know, this was HM. So I guess the bottom line is that this site has really historically always been HM, and all of the development around it has always contemplated this remaining as heavy manufacturing. It's master-planned and zoned HM. Okay? However, until this site really is going to be, could be acquired and developed by a true HM user, the applicant wishes to continue to allow the, we'll call it, the storage of passenger vehicles in the supply pipeline. So these are, you know, the big three that comes off the assembly line, and they're, you know, they need, they're getting it into the supply chain, into dealers. So I think you've seen these places where they fill it with cars, and then they're there for a few months, and then they're all gone, and then it repeats. And then, again, leasing some, we'll call it tractor-trailer space, not RVs this time, but actually trucking companies. He's currently leasing spaces to trucking companies on the property. In fact, many of those, if you were to drive through there and look at the names on the sides of some of those trailers, you'll see them right around the corner at Amazon, right around the corner at the Warrior and Automotive and the other industrial sites there. In fact, I was just following at lunch today, Moonstar Trucking, which is one that they're like, the trucks are there, and they're clearly doing business in the local area because they're, because I see their trucks in the facilities there at the Warrior, behind Warrior. So the, in general, so the use is kind of like in, we'll say it, three pieces, okay? And I'm working from east to west. Along the east, there's 150-foot buffer. That's an ITC corridor, green space. And of course, when Central Park was developed, it was developed with a berm. I think it was an attempt at the actual M1 berm. It's a six-foot berm with a whole lot of trees on it. So it's sort of the major screening berm. It was installed then, I think, when that was developed, it was recognized, hey, that parcel's going to stay HM, so let's put in the major screening one berm there on the Central Park property. So that's there. But then there's the 150-foot buffer, and then there's the contractor equipment storage. This is, you know, this is equipment owned by the applicant in between jobs. There's a crane, you know, there's some cranes back there. There's some concrete barrier block. There's a, there's actually an entire concrete building waiting to be assembled back in there. So these are sort of long-term contractor equipment owned by the applicant. And then that's from 150 to 500 feet from the east property line. And then at 500 feet from the east property line, they're proposing, starting to propose two things. In the north would be the new vehicle storage. That's actually where it's had been permitted as a temporary use before. It's actually even pulled a little farther away from the east property line than it was previously permitted. And that's to the north. And then south of that is sort of a restructuring of the tractor-trailer storage area. Right now, that area is, it just has a lot of backup movements, okay? They're being sold as sort of a, think of it as a giant cul-de-sac where the semi pulls in and turns around and then backs into their spot, sort of as spokes out of a wheel. And there's a lot of backup motion right now. This is, our layout that is in front of you, the site plan, has restructured that so that there is no backup movement with these semis until you get 1,000 feet from that east property line. In fact, in the Amazon site and the other site, there's backing up within 250 to 300 feet of the Central Park property line. But this pulls it to 1,000 feet away. It does mean the applicant would need to rework and restripe what's going on over there. All of those uses, by the way, are on the existing surface that was the old Ford plant, either the prior foundation, slab, or parking lot that was there from the Ford operations. And then most, really, right along Mound Road there is an area where it just doesn't lay out very well to avoid all backup of tractor-trailers. So there's some backing up areas over in that. So the request that's in front of you is, of course, to, it's for Class A non-conforming use. It's the same, you know, it's the same explanation before. These are uses that historically have gone on there at the Ford property. And again, similar to the prior application, we contemplated bringing this in as a special land use. This site, you know, in my, again, I don't, I'm no expert in zoning ordinances, but a special land use for me is more like a use that you think is going to be permanent there. You grant a special land use for a drive-through in a restaurant. That drive-through's going to be there. You grant a special land use for a landscaping contractor who has a storage yard back behind the building. That's a special land use that's going to be there a while. This, in contrast, is more like a use that's probably a little more transitory than that. If a large HM classic user came in and started negotiating in that property, these uses would disappear, and the HM, the full HM development that you've already seen, a couple of examples of, would come in and fully develop at that site. And those uses that are shown here would simply go away. So again, in discussions with the Planning Department, this could have come at you as a special land use, but it was changed to a, you know, a Class A non-conforming and under similar logic. So, and I don't have, you know, I have strong feelings. That's not a hill I'm going to die on. But this is the plan that we're, is going along with the proposal, no matter how it is processed. I think that's about everything I wanted to say about this site. Again, like the prior one, I'm here and available for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Any Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to the public. This will be the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on the Class A non-conforming use request. All remarks will be entered into the record. This time, anybody in the public wishing to come forth, speak for or against, you can come on down, stand at the mic, give us your name and address. And after you're done speaking, I'm going to ask you to sign the sheet there also for
Mark McCoy. I live at the Meadows, 49483, West Central Park.
Go ahead, sir.
So just, I guess, some questions. We do back up right to that berm. I realize, and I guess I realize the, and I'm not a zoning expert either by any --
All right. Move a little closer. Move a little closer to the mic.
Sorry. The, I realize that that's been zoned, the way it's been zoned for, you know, decades. But certainly, way back when, in the 60s or whatever, the beautiful neighborhood that we live in was not there. So things change, things move forward. My, I guess a couple of questions first. The gentleman mentioned a cement factory is being stored on the site. Is that what I heard? A cement?
Address the chair, and then we'll get it clarified afterwards.
Okay. I thought I heard that a cement, parts of a cement factory, and I was curious as to whether that cement factory was going to be potentially erected on that site for operations. So that was one question, and I was also curious, there's, so there's the power, and I'm looking at the map, obviously. So there's the main power lines that go through, and we, where our home is really lined up just north of the main power lines that go toward the west. So we certainly see all the girders and hear the crane activity and the lifting and the on and off, and the backing up, and the fifth wheel of the tractor-trailers slamming and getting connected and so on and so forth. We do hear that. So I guess, how far, my other question is, is how much further south is this going to continue? Is it going to go underneath and further south, underneath that main electrical line? Is a question. I don't know if that's, do I continue on, or is that going to be answered? I don't know how to do that.
I'll get, we'll get all the questions, and we'll bring him back up.
So, and then certainly hours of operation. Curious, we're all curious in the neighborhood of what the hours of operation would look like, and what the sort of, for lack of a better way to describe it, noise ordinances. It's a beautiful community. And Shelby Township is the developer of the Meadows. It's absolutely gorgeous community, and again, I realize things change, move forward. It is a bit of a nuisance, also from a visible standpoint. Yes, the berm, and the berm is literally right behind my backyard, so I'm very clear on the berm size. So from where we sit on the patio, we sort of look a little bit up on an angle. You can, I would say barely, if I stand up, I could, I can probably see the top of the fence that is the fence, the chain-link fence that goes on that property. I don't know how high that fence is, maybe eight feet. I don't know. But we can clearly see into that property. We see all the cement girders and whatever else he's got stored back there, which is beginning to look like a junkyard, to be frank with you. So comments also would be, if it's not going to be stopped, which I doubt it is, you know, is there, could there be a suggestion to put some sort of a larger barrier wall so that we don't have to look at the ISO, much like they did right behind the Warrior Warehouse or Distribution Center? Much larger berm, et cetera, but also certainly a larger privacy wall. So that's a comment, question. I can't think of anything else, dear. Appreciate the time.
Question, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so you tell me how it is. If you're looking out the back on the berm, would you say that the landscape, that the buffering that you have there, that you have, the trees, whatever, is adequate to shield your house from the development?
It's adequate, but again, it's trees, right? So it's not a wall. So you're seeing through the trees, and at fall and winter, you know, the trees that have shed their leaves, and you can see right through there. So.
Okay.
Bit of a loaded question, but it's a hard --
No, no. I was curious as to --
Yeah. I guess frankly, probably depends on the time of year, you know? Would be the way I would answer that.
Okay.
There are some evergreen trees, but again, that's not a wall. You can still see somewhat through them, right? So, and especially the trees that shed their leaves.
Okay.
The non-evergreen trees, like maple trees and so on.
Okay. Fair enough. We'll get the answers to your questions when we get everybody's comments.
Thank you for your time.
Make sure you sign in. Anyone else? Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Carolyn Essien.
Mike, pull the mic. I'll hear you.
Carolyn Essien. I live right across the street from the entrance, and --
Well, on the other, you live west, on the west side?
On the west side, yes.
Got it.
Right across, just directly. My driveway is right across from their driveway. There are three homes that my company built 27 years ago, mine being one of them. So I was there when Ford was there, and it's nothing like this. So I was there when Ford was there, and it's nothing like this. There was parking lots where they had their work shifts that would come midnight, 3:00. That was it. So my question is, is this, the entrance that is across the street, it's 24/7, these trucks, these are haulers, these are 18-wheelers. They are sometimes, in the day, three of them, at one time, one trying to turn left into the entrance, one in the entrance and one behind it. This goes on all day. It's noisy, it's loud, it's lights all night. It's not, it's not pretty, it's, it's hard to protect your investment, really, when you see it. Now, the entrance, is this going to be the entrance for more, more haulers coming in, is it? Because I don't think we could handle that. My suggestion that I would have at that entrance is, it's too short. Mound is two lanes, north and south, two lanes. There is a side service drive, sort of a service drive on my side where my mailbox is, and people think that is a passing lane. And they'll knock down the, if there is an 18-wheeler and they don't want to wait behind it, they will use that passing lane and pretty much almost get nailed, hit garbage cans. It's really not safe. So my suggestion for the entrance would to be, to back it in like a football field length. Back it in so that these trucks are not out on Mound Road waiting. These are, these are long trucks and haulers. So it's not only unsightly, it's unsafe. It's unsafe. I cannot make a left-hand turn into my driveway if there is a truck waiting to turn left, heading south, waiting to turn left. I can't go into my driveway because of that service drive, there might be a car coming that I don't know about. And so that's not safe. I have called the Traffic Road Commission on it. But I would like to know, is there going to be another entrance? Could the entrance be moved? Could the entrance be backed in further? That would be probably a really good plan. It would cost him some money because he'd have to reroute fencing and roads and, but that might be, make things a little easier on everyone. These are nice homes across the street. They're not far across the street. So, just like some answers on that.
Let me follow up with you a second. On the entrance, you said it's 24/7 coming in and leaving all day. Now, is it all day, every day, all week?
All day, every day. I can get up at 3:30 in the morning. I look out the window, there, those big old truckers are coming in, and they face my great room. So those lights, you know, the neighbors do complain about their bedrooms being in the front, so those lights are in their bedrooms.
When you talked to the road commission, what did they say about the issue of a de-acceleration lane?
Pardon?
Bypass lane, what?
Oh, not a lot. This was, I did this a few years ago, and I don't know, he must be sleeping on the job because he said he has cameras and he didn't see one. He also didn't see all the Amazon trucks that big making U-turns in front of my house because they think that's the entrance to Amazon, and it isn't. He didn't, so he must have been sleeping.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, make sure you sign in, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else wish to come down? Going once? Oh, come on down, ma'am, sorry about that.
I live on 5865 Boncourt, just down from where she lives. I'm the first house right there off of Mound, right by the entrance. So, also clarification, where the entrance is going to be? And same thing, we hear the traffic with the semi trucks. The road wasn't built there for the trucks. Is there a way that they could come in off of 23 Mile Road instead, where all the other traffic for Amazon comes in? And also, right at 22 and Shelby, the way that road is angled, the trucks can't make that turn that are trying to go there, and I was right there at that light. And if I didn't back up, the semi truck would have clipped my car because that road isn't meant for semi truck traffic there because of the angle. And we hear the trucks all night. Sometimes there's three of them lined up right there. That road there, the speed limit's 50 miles an hour. Cars go really fast. So maybe a consideration would be to change that speed limit. I don't know, but we're right there, and when the plant was there, we didn't have any of this issue. Just the people that worked there would drive there and park. So now we're getting all this heavy traffic. The, I don't know what they're planning on storing there, heavy equipment. Are they going to be going in and out of that driveway if that, in fact, is going to be the entrance, so?
Okay.
Those are my questions.
All right, we'll get the answers for you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and sign in on there, please. Anyone else? Come on down. We'll put the mic down a little bit for you, thank you.
Carol Haresine, 6374, 22 Mile Road. My questions are about the entrance. If they're going to come, 20, I live on 22, are they going to come out on 22? It's just, there's just so much traffic there already.
So your question is when they exit, are they going to go left or right to go 22 or 23?
No, are they, is the driveway's going to be still off of Mound?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
Anyone else? Going once, twice, three times? Okay. Go over to Julie for your review. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman. So there's a couple of site plan issues that need to be taken care of, some technical issues, benchmarks, easements, service material needs to be indicated. The other major issue that I had is the landscape screening that's along the east portion of the property. I know Mr. Schneider and I have talked about this. There is the ITC easement in there in the corridor, so you're limited on what you can plant in their corridor. However, there is different type of species that you can plant there, but certainly not anything like the Norway spruce that maybe would be able to provide some significant screening for the applicants. Now, I guess this would be a question for the applicant on what he's willing to do to protect those neighbors from, you know, the noise and the visual of the items that are being stored at that site. So we've had this discussion with, like I said, Mr. Schneider. We've been out there on the site as well, just to take a look at it. The northern side of that berm is pretty sparse. Some of the evergreens have died now. Granted, it is on the property for the development, for the residential development, but if there's not an opportunity for him to provide that screening on his property because of the ITC corridor, perhaps there could be some, you know, negotiations with the HOA where he can beef up their landscaping to provide some screening. Or perhaps maybe a wall, you know, that would protect his property on the other side of the ITC easement area. So those are some options that we can exercise there. As far as that entrance, that was never intended to be moved off of Mound Road. That will be there. The entrance to this site, actually, it's a pretty long, significant driveway that has existed over the years, that has been utilized for that purpose, for ingress and egress. There is a Acel Dcel lane there on the east side of Mound Road. But obviously, the Macomb County Department of Roads was not notified of this site because there's not any major improvements, it's just the outdoor storage for this site. So this was never forwarded to them, but we can certainly look into doing that at the board's discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Lisa, go ahead.
So I read here that the applicant is asking for an additional 371 spaces for the tractor-trailer storage. Is that correct?
I wouldn't characterize that as an additional. That's the total on the site, complete, the way it's laid out now. I haven't endeavored to count.
Oh.
It's a little hard to count what's existing there because most, a lot of time, the trucks aren't there. It's not like I can take an aerial and count parking spaces because they're not striped that way. But the, so the number that you see there for the trucks and for the cars, for that matter, that's the total number for the site. That's not the additional beyond what's already there.
And when these trucks, I know this isn't really part of what we're asking for today, right? You're asking for the additional space to the east to be considered as non-conforming?
Yeah, so, for purposes of explanation...
Yeah.
There's a Class A non-conforming use, which is the request that we're here for. We've presented a site plan to go along with that so that you can have, so you have an idea of what you're approving along with it. So to the degree that there are discussions about the site plan, that's, you know, really, it's going to proceed a lot like a lot of the other, you know, maybe almost as a site, as a special land use discussion. What are we going to do at the site? And then, and how can we get it to an approval status? And it will be attached and approved, I'm assuming you'll approve it subject to the site plan that's the final site plan, so.
Okay, can you tell me when the tractor-trailers that come and go, are they coming at night and they're overnight and they just, they have daily uses and they just privately owned and...
Yes.
Type of use?
They're privately owned. Most of them are long-haul trucks. Some of them are used a lot. Some of the companies get in and out of there a lot. Many of them don't. There are trucks there that have actually showed up on a few aerials in the same places, like the same colored truck in the same spot, and it's been there for a year or two, okay? So some of the trucks, almost, you know, it's like, I don't know what they're doing, but they're not out on the road. A trucking company is making money when the trucks are out on the road. So I think to the degree that they're not at the site, that is good. These are long-haul trucking companies, so they do, I mean, they're hauling across country. This isn't a daytime use, like they show up at, you know, 6:00 in the morning, get in their truck, drive all day, and then come back here. This is a situation where they're bringing stuff from, you know, multi-state trips. They arrive, when they arrive, they enter the site, they each have their own code to get into the site, so it's tracked that way. There's a, you know, sliding gate there at the main entrance where the trucks come in. And so their comings and goings are monitored, but they can quote-unquote "let themselves in" and they know where they are going on the site to park.
Okay. Next question. Have you had any discussion with the applicant as to whether they're willing to increase the height of the fence along the east side of the property?
I have. We decided that we would come to the hearing and talk with you and go from there.
And can you refresh what exists there currently?
Along the east property line? The east property line, right now, has what I think was the required heavy, we call it, I think it's major screening buffer. It's a six-foot, you know, again, generally, it's a six-foot wall with a lot of trees on it. Or, excuse me, I apologize, a six-foot berm with a lot of trees planted on it. No wall. There is a security fence on the other side, meaning the applicant's side of the berm, but that's not up on the berm, that's farther down. And there is, there is one place where there's a gap in the berm because there's a utility corridor that comes through there. That's when you drive in, right where the two residential developments, right at their mutual boundary line, there's a utility corridor that cuts through there that prevented the berm from being installed there. And I presume that's going to continue, that they would, that the utility company would not let a berm go there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go through some of these questions they raised, Pete, when they had their comments. First of all, the cement factory on site, I didn't...
No, it's not. I might have, might have misheard. There is a concrete building in pieces, like the walls are tip-up walls, there's a concrete building. Some of you might remember, a building was proposed on a piece on the, we'll call it the northeast corner, right off 23 Mile Road, that the applicant, like a smaller, I think it was 30-something thousand, maybe it was 40,000 square foot building, I can't remember the size. There's a concrete structure that was proposed for that before Amazon decided they wanted to buy it all. And I think that's the building.
Okay.
It just was never constructed. So it's not a concrete plant or a cement factory. It's an actual industrial building in pieces, you know? These buildings are just like Legos, they're just really big, and you need a crane to put them together, that's all.
So now, there were comments about the noise and all that, I'll get to that in a minute, but now, there's a question about how much further south are you going to, you're going to take up that whole eastern section all the way down, right?
Yeah, the area that is on our site plan that's laid out is really a restructuring of the areas that are already being used. So the extent, like the geographic footprint of what's on my site plan, is, in general, the geographic footprint that they have operations going on right now. So no, it's not going to extend south of the power, the power lines come north-south and then they cut 45 and then go across, you know, just north of 22 Mile Road. So no, there's no plan at all to extend into those woods or go south of those power lines. And really, this is just a streamlining and a different layout for the truck storage operations there.
Speaking of the operations, are there some hours of operation that you typically, you said it's, you explained it's not something that is just like nine to five operation, but what do you, is it a 24-hour operation at this location?
Yeah, when they arrive. I'm not hugely experienced with these, but I have had a, I mean, it's just a consistent issue. If a trucker is coming from a long distance, your choices are let them into the site or they're going to sit there and idle on the road until they can get in. So even if the applicant had hours of operation, I'm not sure that it solves the issues that are being raised. In fact, it might actually make them worse. But again, that's just, these long-haul operations, when they get there, they get there.
What about the delivery of the vehicles on site? The cars, is that also a 24-hour operation?
No, that's more business hours, as is the contractor storage. Yeah, those are coming, those are short-haul operations. They're arriving at the site, they're being unloaded during business hour, you know, during a typical day. So those are, you know, if there was a, if there was an attempt to fix operating hours for that, yes, that could, yes, that could be done. And I think that the earlier approvals for that had an hours of operation on them. I'll check.
Okay.
But I think they did.
There are no plans to relocate the entrance, correct?
No, no. This site plan shows the entrance where it exists right now. That's correct. There are actually, by the way, that should be pointed out, there are actually two entrances to the site. One that's used to the south, that's the main one for the trucks. There's also the northerly entrance, which is separate, that exists right now for where the new, the storage of new vehicles are delivered. There are two different entrances there on this property, both off Mound. The, we'll call it the northerly one for the vehicle, the new vehicle storage, and the southerly one for the trucks.
Okay. Commissioner Casalee mentioned the issue of the barrier fence or the screening, it was brought up earlier, that it's really not sufficient. What is the applicant willing to do to ease the noise and the physical appearance of this?
That'd be something I wouldn't answer without having a discussion with him.
Is he here?
Yes.
Come on down, sir.
The applicant, the applicant.
Yeah, come on down, yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Just give us your name and address when you come down, please.
Ken Zabczynski, 50500 Design Lane, Shelby Township, Michigan. Okay, I'm going to start with Caroline. Caroline's lived there for many years.
Address the chair, you can mention Caroline.
No, I know.
Address the chair, okay.
I know her because I know her husband, too.
That's fine.
Great people, great people. Does her house sit right in front of the entrance way that the trucks pull out? Yes. Is there a Macomb County State Highway standard for a de-acceleration lane and a pass lane right there? Yes. Been there, I've been in the township for 70 years, so I lived a half a mile from that site my whole life. I plowed snow in the Ford parking lot, I took care of that place. Okay, so I know pretty, and I'm there twice a day, every single day. When guys are out of line, when there's garbage laying around, it's all picked up, it's picked, I take care of all the grass from Esplendidos down to Mound, down Shelby, down 22 Mile Road. I keep the place looking good. And that's what I, my intentions are, to keep doing that. So I mean, for me to tell a truck driver that he can't, truck drivers work 10 hours on, then they got to stop for 10 hours. So they can't come home, they can't, wherever they're at, if they're in Toledo, Ohio, and their time's up, they got to park... their time's up, they got to park their truck, take a 10-hour break and then drive home. So that's why they come in and out, in and out at certain times of night. There's guys that haul certain products for all your big buildings that you guys have approved for the township. The water plant, all that stuff on 23 Mile Road, them guys all park in there. And, and the way truckers work now, it's a just-in-time service, so they got to come in, go out, when they get a call, they got to go dispatch and, so some of them guys are in there. I know all this because I used to drive a truck. I, I understand the whole situation. And, you know, there, is there really a way around it? Not really. I mean, I, I go in there and I tell them guys, hey, no, if you got a backup alarm and, and safety, you have to have a backup alarm, you know, you'll beep, beep, beep. You go over to Amazon, the rear corner over there where that subdivision is back there, what's that called? Yeah. Well, they're loading trailers, trucks and trailers all night over there, you're hearing fifth wheels popping in, popping out. So I mean, you're going to get, you're going to get that noise and you're getting it the same with, with the stuff off of 23 Mile Road. I mean, it, it's going to happen. So with that being said, I mean, I don't know how to, how to curb the hours for these, you know, tell these guys to, you can't come home.
That wasn't my question, so let me try to rephrase it, maybe we can. It was brought up earlier, Julie mentioned it, the berm and the screening and the buffering between the residents to the east.
Let me go into the berm.
Yeah, so I, so she asked a question of what is the applicant willing to do? I asked Pete, he didn't want to answer it for you.
I can give you that answer too. I, I'll, I'll talk to you guys all night about this property, I got time. Okay. The berm in the back, from where the easement is to the north, there's probably a 15 or an 18-foot high berm with pine trees up there. Glenn Nguyen, when he was a guy, I, he, he made, Amazon, I think, put new trees in there along the berm. From the easement going south, I, probably where this gentleman lives, there's only like a, probably maybe an eight-foot high berm. And then from there, it tapers down even farther. We're not even back there in that area. We go back there, we supply the barrier wall for the Woodward Dream Cruise, we've done that for 20 years. That barrier wall sits back there for the Woodward Dream Cruise, we haul it out at night, one night, we got to haul it out, we got to haul out six miles of barrier wall, take it out to Woodward, set it all up, and then they race and they do their thing for a night, we got to have it back off of Woodward Avenue the following night. So that, that happens one day a week, or two days a week, two days a year. Okay. So now where he's at, there's no activity back there. There's nothing back there. I mean, you got the power lines that run 450 feet from my property line to another berm, and I got all this precast concrete right here stacked up neat, not like junk, because there's probably $2 million worth of product back there. And it's, it's neat, and that's actually worked as a buffer. And the power line company comes through there twice a year, they cut the trees and they cut the grass, all the way along the power line, all the way from there and all the way past Ryan Road. So with the berm situation, you know, it would probably take to build a great big huge berm, probably 10,000 to 15,000 yards of dirt. You just can't snap your fingers and get that, and you got to build it. So.
I don't.
I, I myself, I, I myself, and I do this kind of work for the state highway, we work all over the highways in, in Michigan. The concrete barrier wall that, or not, the, the, the double Ts that I have stacked, stockpiled there is more than enough. We build sound walls on I-75 and on I-94 for people that are complaining about noise going down the freeway. So I mean, I, I, do I want to build a berm? No, I don't want to build a berm.
I don't think I, I don't think I asked you that, maybe I'm confused, but I, Julie, can you help me out? I know you, you mentioned something earlier, and I did, we did get correspondence from somebody who said that it's located behind my, the berm in my backyard and condo, there's been several years now excessive noise and sound. Again, I'll ask, maybe you can ask, what are, what are you willing to do to help ease the situation to the residents to the east? Julie, is there something more I should add to that? Wait, wait, one second, go ahead.
I don't know.
Hold on, go ahead, Julie.
I think you asked the appropriate question, Chairman. It's just a matter of negotiation at this point. I mean, like I said, major two screening is required, and I know that my predecessor, Mr. Nguyen, did a outstanding job in trying to protect the residents when the residential development came in there, as we did North Point, if you're familiar with that berm behind North Point Development. So that's a pretty significant berm to protect the residents. Now, being that the Amazon facility is so close to the site, it's kind of difficult to really get an idea of where the noise maybe could be coming from, it could be coming from the Amazon facility. But again, I understand that there is a berm there, but if there's any possible way that you could work with the HOA, because we did walk that berm with Mr. Schneider, there is some areas that are, you know, that sparse, the, the trees are sparse, so maybe if there's a way that you could work with the residents and maybe instead of providing that berm, maybe add in more spruce trees or what have you on their berm.
And I'm willing to do that, but that berm is on their property.
Right.
You know, for me to put trees on my property really don't make sense.
No, I think, with all due respect, if I can continue, don't be offended by this.
No, I'm not.
You're asking us to grant you Class A non-conforming status, we don't have to do that.
Right.
You're asking us to do that.
Yep.
Julie just said this is subject to negotiation. In exchange, what we're asking you to do is take a look at what is there, address the issues of the residents to the east, work with them so that we could get a mutual agreement here that's beneficial to both sides. I think this can be worked out, but it's something that I think we're not going to work out here tonight, but it's something that can be worked out.
Well, we need to work it out tonight because I'm tired of, of fighting with everybody over here, because I, I've, I've taken care of this place for 12 years. When Glenn Nguyen was here, he gave me approval for everything I wanted. I was the township's best friend at one time. I got him married back up with Ford Motor Company, I let him blow off fireworks, you know, for three years. And then, you know, and I cleaned the whole place up. And then I, I keep getting all this feedback from everybody else, it isn't fair to me. I'm, I'm, I'm not being treated right.
You're, you're still a friend of Shelby Township, let's make that very clear, nobody is saying you're not.
I know that, I know that, I know that.
The issue is.
I'm not a good speaker, so I mean, I told.
You're doing fine, believe me.
Steph, yes, I says, hey, I get up there, I get real nervous, I get real fudgity, but you know, I'm, I'm a good guy, I'm a great guy.
I.
And I'm willing to, to, to work with whatever we got to do here, but I want it to make sense.
Well, I agree with you.
You know.
I would think, just me, okay, for me to approve it, I need, for me to grant a Class A non-conforming status to you, understanding what is a concern to the residents to the east, I need to see something. Now, you have said you're willing to work with them, you're willing to do if it makes sense, I agree with you, it needs to make sense. I would need to see something of what you're proposing to do to address that situation to the east. Again, working with the HOA or doing whatever you need to do.
You know what, though?
I believe you, what's that?
Go ahead. You know what aggravates me about it?
What's that?
There's nothing happening back there. Nothing. Nothing happening back there. You got, their houses over here, I'm there, twice a day, I drive that whole yard every sing, seven days a week. And if I'm not, I have somebody else that are doing it. From that easement going to the south, there is nothing there for 700 feet. Nothing. If it made, I mean, could I, could I call some trucking companies and tell them to, you know, come on over to mound road, we'll start dumping dirt? We can do that. We have bulldozers, we have cranes, we have loaders, we, we can, we can build a berm there.
I don't think we're saying that, Mr. Zabinski, but what I would, I would say.
Trees?
What I, I'm just going to summarize it this way. You, I, I believe what you say, that you're willing to work with everybody, I believe it can be done.
Yes, yes.
If you could add some trees to the berm somehow, working with the HOA to address the issue, I, for me, I, I could see what you're doing, that's all I think we're asking to try to remediate what's happening there. There's obviously something going on and there may not be anything there now, but if you were to bring in other storage back there, something could happen back there. No?
No. There's wetlands back there, you can't build on it, it, it's, it, it can't happen, you know, it, in, it, it, it can't happen, you know, it, but, you know, like you say, if we, if we need to plop some trees on their property and we get the proper, proper paperwork documented and signed and everything else, you know, we, we'll do that.
That's what I'm saying, so I'll just see if any other commissioners have any comments or questions also.
Chairman.
Mr. DeShaw, go ahead.
Sir.
Yeah.
So basically, these are owner-operator truckers.
Yes.
So you have open space.
Yep.
And you said, why not have truckers park? And they're paying a fee, monthly fee, parking there?
Yes.
Okay. In the winter time, those semi trucks cannot shut their trucks down?
Oh, they do.
Okay, well, from, I'm sorry, from my experience, you can't shut that truck down because it's too cold, it won't start again in the morning.
I own 50 of them.
God bless you for doing that.
We shut them off every night.
If I'm a resident, I'm always going to hear that truck. So I just wanted to make sure that this is open space and you said, why not have truckers come park? I can make money from the open space. To the planner, planning department, will that be okay? Does that align with the township? It's okay to have this open space and have truckers park here overnight? I mean, I don't, I just want to clear that up, like.
Well, that's, that's what we're asking for, is the non, Class A non-conforming use, because this site was traditionally used for that type of use before. There was, you know, obviously the Visteon plant there, there was, you can see the photos that were submitted there, there was a significant amount of parking throughout the years on this property. So it is zoned heavy manufacturing, that is the highest industrial use that you can have in the township. So that would be something that would be a permitted use in that district, just like the Amazon facility. If, if they had trucks back there loading, unloading and constantly running, they can do that. It's heavy manufacturing.
Chairman.
Mr. Long?
I, I see we've kind of addressed the concerns of possibly putting up some trees and whatnot along the one side. I'm, I was going to go back to the, the problem of semis idling on mound road. Is it possible to move that fence back and maybe extend that driveway to maybe two or three rigs? Could stage in the driveway? Pull off of mound?
I thought of that same thing, yes. To where you're pulling in, right now, there's, there's room for one semi plus the de-acceleration, there's probably 80 feet there from the gate to, I was thinking that too, maybe pushing the fence back and setting the gates farther into the property.
Maybe widen the driveway, maybe two rigs waiting to get into the yard?
I don't know if we got to go that far into it, because.
Well, true, if you had more room, you could put them end to end.
There's room for two of them side, side by side, yeah.
So maybe if you move that fence back, you could allow two to be waiting to get in?
Yes, yes.
Maybe they don't know where they're going to park or whatnot.
And I, and I, yes, that's, that's, I would be willing to do that, yes.
And maybe, maybe ask the guys, hey, if you guys are going out in the evening, can you keep your headlights down and maybe turn them on when you get, get up north or south heading on mound? Just to help the.
No, I, and I, and I understand it 100%, I mean, really, for Caroline over here.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Long.
Where she lives, it's not a good spot. If she wanted to sell that house, I would buy that house.
That's a different negotiation.
I love your house and I know, and I keep an eye on your house. When you go to Florida in the winter time, I watch that house. I make sure, I look for tracks up the driveway, I'm in and out of that gate constantly and I know your black Cadillac and your husband's white Blazer, yeah, or whatever, yeah. So I mean, I, I care. I've been here forever, I, you know, I understand it all, you know, so.
Lisa, did you have a question?
I just want to clarify, please. On the, on the schematic here where we have the semi truck and trailer storage area currently, that is where they will park, they're not going to be further to the east on that property, right?
No.
Okay, so I guess what, that's where they exist now and that's where they're going to stay?
Yes.
In that area. And so I guess the residents then can hear or see from where they're at. I mean, I know it's, it's a long distance, but if they're saying they can, I think we should address that a little bit, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I understand you mean the distance, but they are hearing something and it is causing a little bit of a nuisance, and we have a chance to, like Mr. Turner said, rectify the situation for the residents, so.
I mean, trust me, I, I make them guys walk through their, on their hands and knees, making sure that they're not making noise. If you got a backup alarm, don't back up back there, because I've had this discussion with the planning commission and I have, I'm in there, I'm in there, you know, and I'm on it, I'm on it, because I understand it all.
We appreciate that, Mr. Zabinski, it's clear. You, you care and it's coming through to us that you care, so.
No.
Seriously. So anybody else have any questions? Okay.
So I mean, I'll, if you want some trees, we'll put some trees in. I don't know what, you know, blue spruce or Norway spruce or black spruce, I mean, we'll have to figure out what, you know.
Whatever makes sense, like you said, right?
Well, what's, what's going to happen after this meeting? The trees, I already started on a section on mound, the trees are too old, they need to come down, because they're getting bare, a blue spruce comes up, you lose your branches, they look bad. So this fall, in fact, we just ordered 200 trees that are going to be planted along mound to get rid of the old trees, the, the ones that are really shaggy looking, they, they don't look good at all, you know. So that's going to happen and we can put some of those Norways back there, Norways or black spruce or, I get with the, the right people to find out what, you know, what they think we should put back there. But again, that, that, that property goes back, how far does that go, Pete? From the easement to the south in.
To the west.
I mean, I'm not willing to do the whole thing, I'm willing to do, yeah, I'm willing to do, you know, what are them lots, 50-feet lot, 50-foot lot, 60-foot lot.
Here's what I would suggest, whatever you do, get with the planning department and then do your negotiations and then come up with a plan that we can see and then we'll go forward from there.
That'll work.
Okay. Anything else, Pete, you want to add? We had quite a show here, anything else?
Better than I did.
Okay.
I guess I, somebody need to intro the project.
No, it's fine.
No, I mean, I understand the whole situation.
We appreciate it, okay. Hearing none, I have a motion to close the public hearing. Support. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our recommendation must be based on the following, the continuance thereof would not be contrary to the public health, safety and welfare or the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The use does not and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception. No useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions or requirements of this ordinance with which the use does not conform. Again, we may approve, disapprove or table this to evaluate the information we received tonight. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Casselli?
I move to postpone the Class A non-conforming designation for site plan number 25-16, Ken Zabinski, Zebra Holdings LLC, vacant parcel number 230721100013, located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of mound for a vehicle and heavy equipment storage yard in order to give the applicant time to address the comments voiced by the planning commission and/or the public, including but not limited to the following, which would be. I move to postpone the Class A non-conforming designation for site plan number twenty-five dash sixteen, Ken Zabinski, Zebra Holdings LLC, vacant parcel number twenty-three zero-seven-two-one-one-zero-zero-one-three, located north of Twenty-two Mile Road on the east side of mound for a vehicle and heavy equipment storage yard, in order to give the applicant time to address the comments voiced by the planning commission and/or the public, including but not limited to the following, which would be addressing the screening along the eastern portion of the property.
Motion by Casselli, supported by a Pone, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Casselli?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Yeah.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. So I would recommend getting with Julie, and then, uh, come up with a plan, and you'll be all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make it right, trust me.
I trust you, I believe you, believe me.
I love my neighbors, I know what it's all about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zabinski. Anything under new business, anybody wanna come up and address? No, okay, Julie, planning director's report?
Uh, thank you, Chairman, I just have a couple items here, uh, city of Rochester Hills, um, notified the township that they will be doing some tree removal off of DeQuinter and Twenty-three Mile, they're behind Yates, um, just for some utilities and some other projects that they're doing on, um, that's going on over in that area. And then, um, if you notice any, uh, construction going on at the Target at Twenty-six Mile in Van Dyke, they're just, uh, upgrading it, no painting of the brick, they're just painting the drive-it and making some minor modifications to meet their new branding requirements, but no painting of the brick, um, just the, the drive-it and the facade, so, just so you know.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else, a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.